I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we'll skip all of the reports and everything like that and go right to new business discussion of juvenile detention center.
Okay. Well, so, thank you guys, commissioners, for having us here again today. I think the reason we're having this meeting is to recap since our last meeting in November, where we had it held at the Architects Alliance office, discussing where we were with the project as far as the current design, the programming needs for that design, and then also looking at options of how can we reduce the cost to get it closer to a $12 million budget. In those discussions, we determined through Napp Holt's hard work of cost estimation and conjunction with the Architects Alliance and then Trainer, we were looking at multitude of different options and basically came down to three general options, each of those being able to be expanded upon, obviously, so that we can go into each of those. But the general one is, one, we keep the program as it is. That was the original 15.8 million, but to trim that, basically trimming the fat, so to speak, we could lower the number that's doing value engineering and some square foot reduction. So that gets you a little bit below the 15.8, but you're still within, you know, you're hovering around the $15 million mark for option A. The option B or two would be the one where we do a little bit more extensive value engineering. We're changing out building systems and dramatically reducing some square footage. That gets you down to 14 million, and if I may speak, please, please correct me. And then option three was to try to get as close to 12 million as possible, which would actually eliminate square footage and scope of the project removing program. And that particular option was identifying some administrative wings that could be removed and possibly located off-site with some logistics considerations for that. And that option was for a 12.5 million facility. Again, that's lopping off, not the best word to use there, but that's reducing the facility footprint by a third essentially to get that down to 12.5. Now, each of these options, as we mentioned, we can go into and we can really get into the weeds of what that means and what all that goes. But ultimately, we need the commission direction of what budget we really need to focus on. And if it is option three for 12.5 million, are we going to go ahead and proceed with that path by reducing scope? And if we are gonna reduce program and square footage of the building, what do we need to do to help make sure that that's coordinated appropriately with you guys for the logistics for off-site? Obviously, the off-site stuff would be handled through you guys and your coordination, but we will help kind of tailor and package this design to make sure that we meet those needs. Obviously, you know, from the standpoint of the programming needs, if you want all the program to happen to meet those needs, you know, from judges' standpoint, from Toby's, and then furthermore, then obviously, you're gonna be in the 15 million mark. So that's kind of where we're at. And I know that since then, some discussions have happened with commissioners and some other folks and some work Harry has been doing. So I don't know if any of those options are viable or if there's any tangible path for other options to help us proceed to look into attaining a different option than the 12.5 million dollar option.
I think it's important just to recap where we are in the process. We're still at a programming SD level, so when we're saying 15 or 14 or 12, it's very much at a what is the program of the building? So that as we then work with Architects Alliance and get the full scope designed, those numbers still, we could find savings throughout there. But it did, in our meetings, it felt like it was targeted at three pretty specific program options. And then from there, we still pursue savings and can pin down the exact number, just to reassure, we're not signing contracts for a certain amount right here. We're targeting a program budget.
Right, exactly.
I had mentioned to you, maybe going down to six cells as opposed to the eight for the time being, but have room that we can expand whenever we're flushed with money again. And maybe even some of the other, I mean, so that we, it's set up so that we can add on and expand. I keep using as my analogy, in 1918, the courthouse was struck by lightning and burned, and all that was left were the walls and the bell tower. And the county commission, the judges, had $45,000. And they put it under roof again, they put windows in, they finished off just the first two floors, and everything up above it was just unfinished space. And then as they found the money, they finished everything again. But, you know, the cells aren't inexpensive, so if we would cut that back to six, and I was at Health Department, those laminate floors out there, they've held up really well. So I would suggest, you know, some of the finishes, you know, no carpet, laminate floors, we don't need any fancy lighting, just good LED lighting, things like that. You know, we just need to be very frugal with how we build it, so.
No, absolutely. And to that point, I think that, you know, even, so the 14 million dollar option is actually more in line with what you're asking for. So the reduction of some of those spaces, and that's even playing with square footage, whether we actually reduce the cell count or just dramatically tighten the square footage of the cells to reduce that square footage, because there's a considerable amount. So if you just take it on face value, what the size of this is, and you took two cells off, technically, what we could do in square footage reduction is still keep those cells, but reduce that square footage out. So there's options to where we can do that and play with that square footage, because it's ultimately Mitchell's helpful diagram that he put together whenever he was doing cost per square foots that we talked about in that meeting in November, is that each of these areas has a very particular need and construction type. So obviously, to your point, the hardened, secure side is the most expensive per square foot side. We're in the 600, above $600 a square foot. Once you get beyond that, you get into the 400s, 3s, and 2s. So the more administrative and non-secure side, the square footage costs for those areas are a lot less, so when we do cut those spaces, that impact is less than the secure side. Now, with that being said, we will look at, you know, in any option that we pursue, when we cut the secure side, we want to make sure that we're not doing anything that's gonna compromise how the facility runs or operates as far as keeping detainees secure. As far as materials go, we don't plan on doing anything fancy anyway. Majority of the facility is gonna be exposed concrete. We'll have some carpet and some soft areas that need it for acoustics, like offices and stuff like that, but otherwise, we can eliminate that. Those costs are kind of incidental to the bigger picture of program. So really, where we're at is, it's not necessarily what materials can we change out? It's quite literally what square footage do we want to keep or get rid of? And I think that's where we're at.
Still valid option, but.
Yes.
So when we, when we were looking at this option, can we reduce the cell count? It was a programming discussion of what do you currently have when you're building this facility? Do you need six? Do you need eight? Losing two would be another additional savings option, but it is a program cut. But that program cut may balance out the loss of admin. And then if we can target in addition to go there, it would, to your point, yes. It is not in any of these three that we're talking about. That would be an additional cut.
Well, with six cells, if we go to six, we're doubling what we have. And I know, you know, we're having to send some of our juveniles to other facilities because we don't have the cell space.
Yeah, I mean, and really, depending on how we play with this, on what program gets removed or not, I mean, we can, we still can make this a viable option so that when, if funds are available and you do need to expand, that can happen. Obviously, depending on certain circumstances, you limit yourself in those scenarios. But even for the administrative wing, when we're talking about getting to the 12.5, technically, we could remove that and still allow that so that when the funds do come, that whole section of the building can be inserted and built in. And we would design it in a way to where, when we do this approach, that they can tie in together fairly easily. So there are options to pursue. So we can, even if we do cut program to make this work now, we can do it in a way that if you do get funds later, make it happen. Now, that still comes down to what are we cutting? And what does that mean? And we're more than happy to help you guys with any of this.
Just to refresh, maybe, I had memory of 2.5 million for that detention side over there. Was, am I way off on that? Or?
Yeah, it's six.
Okay. Six, it's six, all right.
Six point nine five, yeah. Seven.
Yeah, seven.
It's seven, okay.
Sorry, yes, it's seven, and then if we cut other, cut square foot for the VE.
Whether you have one cell or a dozen cells, you've got one Sally Court, right?
Yep.
Whether you have one cell or a dozen cells, you have that, it's almost like, you know, where the control people sit.
Control center.
Whether they're watching one or a dozen cells, it's one. So, I mean, there is some, I won't call it savings, but some efficiencies in scale. You wouldn't build this with one cell or two or three, because we've got three. Six, maybe, and how you shell out the other sides so that for the rest of it, I mean, you would probably shell it.
Yep.
So that you could go to what's kind of.
It's an important point, because currently, we would just be cutting cells only. You're not reducing the program of the rest of the detention center, similar to once you'd build out to be 12, or the, from eight to 12, for the other two additions where defining that same core area stays the same.
Were we a little oversized per cell square footage going, you know, on our first pass at this?
Yeah, so there, well, when, I wouldn't say oversized, but there's a little fluff in there, I guess, is what we should say. And so Trainer looked at that, and they provided a sketch where they kind of tightened that in, and they did save a decent amount of square footage on that, where it was just what's the bare minimum these have to be? And so they did, they did that approach. And that's the same with the day spaces. So the dayroom spaces reduced in size, the cells didn't reduce as much, because they're already small, but they, we scaled them back whatever they could, and then he took the majority of that out actually in the day spaces. So that area can tighten. And so you do save dollars per square foot. So, I mean, if you save a thousand square feet at, you know, $700 a square foot, then, you know, it's still a savings. But to your point, the heart of this secure area, as far as the control center, the support spaces, I mean, those really kind of still maintain regardless. Now, some of these other spaces, we can definitely trim. So, you know, the heavy lifting area or the heavy muscle, that's a half basketball court. Does it have to be a half basketball court? No. But what is that minimum size and what do we reduce it? That was one of the options that we explored too with Trainer. So when this tightened up, it was, can we reduce that a little bit, get some more square footage? Because obviously, this is a taller box, slightly different structure, little different cost per square foot. But that's how all of this was looked at, is where can we trim and where can we reduce? And any of these options, particularly the first two, that's what we're doing, is going through what value engineering steps can we identify to reduce finishes included in that? So where can we trim unnecessary finishes that we can do without? And then proceeding from there, it's what program options can we tailor? What program has to maintain at this size and what program can be reduced? And then furthermore, once we get into the option for the 12.5, is even if we do reduce those square footages to get down, we're not gonna get to 12.5 without a reduction of And so, and one of those things too, just for example, even the outdoor classroom space, for instance, even if, you know, we took that out completely, that's still one of those figures in the value engineering of if we were messing with all of this and trimming the fat, to say again, that's the entire approach that we're looking at at any of these options. So no matter what we want to move forward with, we just want to make sure that the program is identified that you guys really want to move forward with. And then we will try to tailor with Napp Holt's and your staff to make sure that we get it in a reasonable budget. So ultimately, I think today, I don't know if we necessarily come to a hard answer, but it's more so we need to start thinking about the program and whether, you know, are we reducing the administrative side? And can we relocate those offices to be in a different building for now? And then, and if so, do we approach that as that's a future expansion? Or do we go back to, can we, is there another means to find money to make 15 million dollars work? And so that's where we've been, kind of back and forth, is really, the money's at 12 and the building, to get the program, the full program that's desired requires a 15.8 million dollar project. So we're just trying to help determine with you guys what program is priority. And I think we can help shape this facility to either of these three target budgets. We'll do that. It's just a matter of identifying from your guys' standpoint what that is. Hopefully, that didn't sound like a rambling bunch of words there, but.
I've visited with the owner of the property prior to our acquisition, and he owns adjoining property, where the family does. And he's more than willing to talk about, you know, the top of the hill, across the street, there are two vacant office buildings there, that if we would pursue office space up, he's more than willing to talk about it. Just, I don't know if that muddies the water or just a bright shining star. Of course, the other thing is, we, Curtis, you and I and Toby and our lobbyists went to the Capitol yesterday and threw a couple of Hail Mary passes, that we don't know if they're gonna be completed or not. Our argument there, or our position was that Cole County being a single-circuit county operation as opposed to a multi-county, we get shortchanged by the General Assembly all the time. For instance, in House Bill 12 this year, there's $18 million to go out to multi-county juvenile facilities. And it's 18 million every year, because that's the way it is. And we get zero, right, because we're single-circuit. So we've asked for some consideration, both from the House Budget Committee and the Senate Appropriations Chair Office, but they might be Hail Mary passes. And that probably muddies the water even more, but just put it all out there.
And that would be a, so, you know, just thinking out loud here, how that path would work too, is if, if it sounds like there could be traction there, because depending on where their funds are coming from and they're pooling, obviously, you know, one of the big things that they're talking about was, you know, for the MSP side, and if that's not gonna go as it is, it may actually benefit this project, because they could start reallocating the funds from that. So if that gains traction, what does that mean? How long in a session does that take to get done and accomplished through whether the House or the Senate for that to be a reality?
May 15.
May 15, okay. So it'd be this session then, and then?
It'd be the current, or the, the, the.
Before summer.
Fiscal year that starts July 1, is where the funding would come from.
I would like to see maybe cut out that outdoor classroom space, because from what I've been hearing, it's really not utilized by other counties that have that space. And there's some other issues. Do we need the half court? I mean, we don't have any indoor facilities right now for, is that required?
It is required.
Okay.
So we have the outdoor, the area that is enclosed by the fence, if any, if they come out. That was the.
I'm not contagious, I'm sorry.
That was what was put in place to facilitate both hospital exercise, hoping you have to have interior.
So, and just a question, Sandra, you said, because I get mixed up on what they, what they're calling the term of that, the outdoor classroom, you're not talking about that center part, that open area center part, are you?
Yes.
Okay, that's stupid. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see any need for it.
Yeah, I don't know, I think, I think we're talking about two things.
But then I brought in about the half court, just because, you know, I'm just looking for ways we can.
Well, both of the facilities that we visited, in Kirkville and in Joplin, had the large muscle exercise area, right?
Large muscle exercises required. I think that they're talking about the class area.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. We're talking about two things at once, but, but we don't have a choice whether or not we have large muscle exercise area. We don't have a choice.
Yeah.
And the current one we have, in quotes, is to go outside and run through the vinyl fence and don't come back.
For the outdoor classroom, that would, that's one of the VE options we're saying would still, you need to make program decision, is a $250,000 reduction, and that would be assuming we reconfigure the force place to still give you daylighting.
One second after a question.
It's the figuring.
Yeah.
That sounds like the same Bushman outdoor, large exercise.
Yeah, I don't need that. I go to the length.
So that, that would still be something to pursue, and it may factor into this overall program discussion, but it wasn't enough dollars to say you're going to be able to still do eight cell and still keep admin without making a program decision. That, reducing the gym was another potential up to $100,000 option, but still, we're talking.
And I think all of that was still a part of that 14 million dollar range.
Yeah.
So that's considering reducing the muscle, I think, to half and eliminating that day classroom interior court.
Okay.
And square footage reduction of the cells, I think, was still at that 14 million. So that's, that's why we're saying it's really, I mean, to get to a 12 million dollar budget, it's a program cut.
And then to cut beyond would still be.
But, you know, you take, they take 250,000 here, 100,000 here, I mean, it adds up.
No, it does.
It all adds up. So, you know, it's like, I'm just looking at ways we can, you know, get a bunch of those and maybe get us up to a million that we've saved.
Yeah, well, and that's essentially what, what we were looking at too, is so, obviously, one of them, we saved 800,000, that's the first option. The second option, we were saving 1.8 million. And that's, that's the reduction of the classroom, the dayroom, and some of the secure side, with some value engineering and some material options. So that's still, you know, considerably trimming and removing square footage from the building and still getting to 14. So that's why we, you know, that's why we're basically saying that it's a program thing. We even looked at, you know, talked about discussion options of a, you know, what construction types can we change? Can we alter, you know, what we do for how this is constructed from one area to the other? And just to give it a very simplified version of what it is currently, it's not anything fancy. So the hard side is literally CMU block. And for the secure side, that really probably needs to stay that way, and that construction type probably shouldn't change. The other side, however, could change into different types of construction. It's currently just metal stud and drywall. So it's, it's not anything fancy per se, but for instance, what if you did a pre-engineered metal building on that side? What does that do? Do you get the savings from that option to get you down to 12.5? It still doesn't come to that number. So that's why, you know, when we're playing with this, we're looking at different system changes, we're looking at what that cost per square foot is, and where can we trim? And we're looking at, and identifying those and tallying those into, or Mitchell is actually tallying those into a spreadsheet. And that's really where we're at, is we're saying we are doing that, and considering those options, we still have to cut program. So, I mean, it's basically saying if you have to have this program, it isn't gonna be able to be built for 12 million. But we can build you a 12-point, whatever facility, it's just a matter of what can we cut off to get to that.
I don't think option three is an option.
No.
Because we're counting on selling the old building, and that's going towards, you pay for this. So that one out.
Yeah, I agree.
Option one and two, I think it's gonna be, not just throw it all in your lap, Toby, but it's your program. I think, really, she's the one that needs to sit down with this. If we're limiting it to 12 and a half million, then I think y'all just have to sit down and sharpen the knife and hash it out. Because I don't know which part that you're willing to give up something. Which part is the least on your list that you could cut from and that you could put there? That's just kind of why I'm at with it. I'm not even rescinding it for 12 million, but we're at that point, and we gotta get it down to getting some of that function. But I think it's kind of near the half of what's on there.
And to expand on that real quick, so when we met last, we did, we did go through with Toby, kind of where it is that we could, if we were to pull something out of here, what is it? Well, as far as the program needs, when you take her list of what she is required to perform, I think the only thing we did was add one additional office outside of the required program that you needed. If I'm misspeaking, please correct me, anybody. But, so, basically, we said, okay, if that's the only program that's an easy cut is one office, that isn't gonna work, so what can we do? So that's when we talked in November about, you know, can we section off administrative wings? And that's the option where you're saying that we also can't pursue that. But that's really where we need, you know, a third of this building to come off to get 12.5 to work. It's just in the, it's just in the dollars per square foot, to just be blunt about it. So that, you know, when we look at this, that option is, you know, a feasible option if you can make off-site facility work. And again, like I said, we can design it to where that's, that's, the other option is you make that a shell space, but you're still gonna pay for that perimeter, that slab, and the roof. So then you don't really save that much, even if you do maintain it as a shell space. So where we're at is, you know, outside of value engineering, which those options get us from 15.8 to 15, to further reduce square footage, to reduce unnecessary spaces, to cut muscle space in half, get rid of the basketball court option in there, just give them a space to work out whatever the minimum square footage is, reduce out the classroom, you're still at 14. And let's, let's say you take out that additional office, I mean, you're still, I mean, that's, you're still at 14 with that additional office taken out. So what we were looking at was, was what if you cut the, you know, if you're cutting the building and the program, how's this building actually divided? Well, you have a secure side, non-secure side, and then the non-secure side is kind of two different wings itself. So that's more of the administrative side, and then you have the non-detained youth that will be in there. So one half of that is for youth and family services, and the other half is the administrative wing. Even talking about conference room sizes and break rooms, that's still square footage reduction, that would be a value engineering option that we would explore. Again, that's still within your 14 million dollar range. All those square foot reductions almost get you $2 million in savings. But that's still where we're at at that point. So if 14 isn't gonna work, I don't know if we're gonna be able to have a project to maintain this program that's near, or Toby, minus the classroom, or minus that one office. I just, I don't know.
So let's, if we start with 14 and say, let's VE from our 14, which is reduce corridors, reduce, you know, flexibility, even some safety concerns on how they operate, to get to 14, if you cut 600K to go to six cell instead of an eight cell, and then you're cutting the front admin area, it could be a pre-engineered metal building, a different look, that could save you another half a million. And then you're cutting the gym to half a gym is 100K, you're still not quite getting to 12 and a half. And those would be some pretty, pretty big cuts to get you closer to the 12 and a half.
Are y'all squaring that building up at all yet? Getting rid of all those curves and angles?
That's part of that 14 or.
That gets you closer to the 14. What I'm saying, if you squared both up and fitted in a pre-engineered box on the front, that could save you.
Like, we're just putting in a rectangle box.
The whole thing has got all kinds of different angles and where the jets out and stuff, and that, every time you do that, it adds up to the price, so.
Yep.
Square rectangle, whatever you wanna call it.
Be more palatable if we can get down even, you know, 13 million.
With, with six, cut to six cell, that's a, that would be a viable option to look at?
But before we close the door on two spots or two work places, although I think one on stadium and one out there is impossible, but one 300 yards up the hill as admin, and the rest down the hill, is that possible? up the hill as admin, uh, and the rest down the hill, is that possible?
I think you should have that asked the board, you can say, you're going to have to... So you said we're going to, we're going to build the space and just keep it a shell space, how much more would it be to finish that off, and, and you said it's not that much of a saving?
This would, those options would be cutting it completely, not, not a shell space, so, to really gain, you know, we, we would have to be just dedicating outdoor space that could be a future addition, and then you've got the cost of the exterior wall that expands in the future, so, it, it becomes more costly to add back the extra two cells, or add back, you know, expand the gym further, because you just built a wall. Just doing shell space in this type of construction, kind of, that gains a lot, I mean, it, it's $2 million worth of detention equipment in that detention area.
Yeah.
So each cell is, you know, you're, you've got 400 or 500K just in the...
Yeah.
Those boxes, so, yeah, dropping cells and just shelling the structure does gain you, but it, it doesn't gain you the type dollars we're talking.
Well, I agree with Jeff, the 15.8 million is just not doable, uh, so, maybe come up with some other options, kind of like what we, and just, you know, I was, I'm, I was like, I really want to keep it at 12, but if, if, you know, I'd like to...
You know, we're at 12.5, right?
I, I would.
Well, I'll, I'll beat a lone wolf and it, and be higher than that, but I know I'm out, out on that plank by myself, but, uh, I think we're playing with fire if we don't address our juvenile facility fix, uh, because what we have is not sufficient.
I would just encourage you to go, you know, I learned this with kitchens, you have all these guidelines on how kitchens should be, and you build a kitchen like that, and then you say, hey, this doesn't work, you know, two things have happened in the juvenile detention business, one of which is, we have become, or juvenile detention has become long-term custody, for all the certified youth, that's the part of R A D A's, normally we talk about, is that we're required to hold these juveniles until they're re-jeating, and we're holding juveniles who've been charged with offenses that take a long time to get to trial, um, and, you know, we have all these existing facilities that we have looked at, but some of the problems that they've had down there is a function of trying to keep youth long-term in a building with no spec, and the, you know, looking at, you can cut these, you can certainly make this 24 instead of 30, but I would encourage you to find someone who's actually done that, and then go look at that facility, and you could always, like I said, nickel all these edges off of this to make them smaller, but sometimes that space is a safety net, you know, you can't take somebody down to the ground because there's a table in the way, or a counter in the way, and there's not enough space, so I would encourage you to find a facility that's built the way that you're proposing with that sort of space, allocation, um, before you, before you commit to that concept, because, you know, there's no use building something brand new that's that, that... You know, the other thing is, you know, you've got six, we've been fought, I don't know, enough, uh, with three, if you go to six, but the, you know, we've been farming people out, the long-term people out there, so it's... Yeah, it looks like, it looks like 100% increase in cells, but you've been running at sub-efficiency to start, so, but, like I said, the biggest thing I would do is try to find someone who has a facility that's constructed with the size that you're talking about, and then look at that, and I don't know that, you know, that, that's been done, because I don't think these other places that we've done, that we, you know, we want to look at are that sort of size.
Just, sorry, but just to, uh, reiterate, on the certified juveniles, once they get certified, uh, by the new state statute, juvenile has to hold them and I have to pay for them, they become my prisoners, so, while she's holding them, I'm paying $25,000 a year to her to hold my prisoner, if they get sick, I have to go take them to the doctor, um, they got, uh, court appointments, I have to take them to court appointments, if she doesn't have the space and she moves into Columbia, or Wentzville, or wherever, I still have to pay that $70 a day elsewhere, and I still have to go and transport them, so the spacing is, is critical to the sheriff's department, because we're, we're only going to get more than four or five adults, we've had three in the past, what, uh, three in the past two years, so, I mean, and there are two sitting in the opera right now, so, uh, this is very, it's critical to the operation of the sheriff's department, too.
I think we probably do need to put the offices in while we're doing this, because leasing space, you know, by the time we, we adapt it to meet your needs, it's, that's not cheap, and, you know, we found that out just moving offices across the street, just getting internet and everything, I mean, it's, so, I would say, you know, we, we proceed with that, I, I'm just looking at ways to save, so...
And to your point on that one, not to interrupt you, but, uh, e- even if we did the $12 million option where we're cutting program and, and doing separate facilities, that 12 million is just for this building, that's not talking about what you need to do to renovate, expand, and update...
Why not?
To get them operational in the other facilities, so, I mean, it's a, it's an odd kind of double-edged sword here of, of your give and take of, of what this one is...
No, I, I would say, they all, they all need to be in one location.
I, I guess, I, you know, uh, for the hail mary coming from the Capitol, is if, um, I don't know how long, I mean, so if an actual decision is made in, in, in May, um, is there any way that we'd know if there's any traction that could gain in our favor, your favor, um, before then, so that if we wanted to wait for that option, or if we just go ahead and pursue something else?
Well, it'll, it'll, it'll unfold as time goes, uh, as time passes, we get closer to, to when they have to adopt the budget, we'll know then, that's going to be something sooner than May 15, but, and, and it could, it could happen a lot quicker, I know, a hell no, or, are you crazy, we're, we're not doing that for you, that could come any day, but the, the yes is always tentative until it gets past 12,000 in the governor's mind.
Right.
So, somebody's got to, we're high somewhere here, we keep talking, I wasn't for the 12 and a half million, but we're there, are you going to say, 12 and a half million, Toby, here's your money, you build it or pull the program, or are you going to increase the amount, I think that's kind of where you're saying you're going out on a, on a plan or whatever, but, uh, the other option is, we just go back and go to the old place, so, that's where you either have to say, Toby, you got 12 and a half million, you're going to have to make this work somehow, somewhat, or increase it, it's not, it's not going to happen at 12 and a half, but that doesn't even include the furniture and equipment, I mean, praise Brian here, I don't know if we've really looked that hard into...
Yeah, the FFNE.
All the other computers and stuff that we're out to do there, and that stuff, there's, there's going to be additional costs in there, so, we got to make a decision, I got to have voted on the 12 and a half million, we'll live with it, I'm not going to vote for any more than that, Sam, if you want to increase it, I'll...
Well...
We got to...
Nothing gets cheaper, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be, so, you know, I, the 15.8 million, we just, we don't have, so, ideally, you know, we, we, see what we can cut and see how low we can get it, and then, I'm, I'm ready, I, how, how, how long is it going to take to build this, once we approve this?
Uh, can, design and construction was at 15 months, so, it depends on how much we end up redesigning to when we can actually start on site, um...
The building itself could put what, a year?
Yeah, that's, right now, we got a 12-month build, so...
So the longer we wait, the more expensive everything?
So, and, these numbers were pre, pre-tariff numbers, steel availability numbers, so this...
Oh, yeah, so it's priority.
This is, this is, there is a time factor here that, yeah, we, we don't necessarily want to wait till May, see if more funding, we, you know, we want to make a decision, yeah, there could be an addition that we look at, that could roll in before we're actually putting stuff in place on site, but we need to get at least the steel portion ordered and, and going.
Uh, I agree with Jeff, 15.8, which means it's going to be up over 16 million, with all this, is, is not feasible, so, see what you can come up with, uh...
The options we have, they're, 15.8 wasn't presented to you as an option, so it's either a 15 even, a 14 even, or a 12 and a half, is kind of how we broke the three program decisions, so, we had already assumed we're making some good value decisions to get to 15 without cutting program, um, the, the additional cuts, the square footage, the day rooms being smaller, which creates operations and safety factors, that's what gets you down to the 14.
Okay, 14 would have our offices, our administrative offices?
14 still has that program there, it just, it is the smaller site that...
Okay, and if you cut out two cells, that's, what'd you say, 650,000 saving?
600, yeah.
And was 14 including the outdoor classroom space?
Uh, currently, yeah, it, that was a $250,000 saving that we can target there.
So, yeah, we're, we're close to a million, time you look at everything.
Yeah.
And then also, was that a half-court gym, or...
No, so a half-court gym would be another $100,000 savings we could target.
Okay.
So, that's where we're, that's where we're saying, you could, you could...
Okay.
Cut beyond it, but it still kind of lives in these different program decisions.
No, but if, we're mandated to provide that, I don't know if we need to have that.
I don't think we should have a half-court gym.
I mean, technically, we can just, you know, immediate savings, depending on what the actual square foot minimum is for that area, but cutting it in half, I, I know that's where its number is coming from, it's just cutting it in half.
Keeping part of it open air, where we're not, you know, if, if a lot of it could be outdoor.
So that's like a million dollar saving, when you do those three things.
If you could do, the, the cell cut's probably the biggest decision, like, that's a, that's expensive to add back later, tough to, tough to reconfigure the building, uh, that feels like a pretty big program cut that, and a big dollar number to target.
That's somewhere down the road, we might get state money, they might understand, it's kind of like what they're doing to our courts, you know, they keep throwing all these trials and...
So if they can't do it for 12 and a half million, what, you got, pull the project?
No, I'm...
Okay, so...
I, I, I really like 14 million, or 13.5 million, or whatever, I just want to see what we can save and still, uh, come up with an adequate building that, that works.
We just need to tell Toby what she's got to work with, so, if you're going to give her 14 million, then we just need to tell her that.
That would be the max, that would be the max, you know, I was...
Or she wants to stay with 12 and a half, she's staying with 12 and a half.
I don't think we can do, we're not going to be able to do what needs to be done.
Make a decision, I mean, that's the fun thing about this job.
14.
14. Make some people happy, so I'm not so happy sometimes, so...
Well, we're required, we have so many requirements that we have to meet, and, uh, you know, our current building, it's, it's, was built 19...
193.
Yeah, it's, it's...
And you're looking at probably 1.5.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's served its purpose, but it's not accurate.
Well, I understand what we need to do to have the program, and if there's stuff that Toby's not willing to cut, then you got to make a decision if we're not going to do the project there, if you're going to go 14 million, we, we could sit here all day and say, well, let's change the doorknobs, can we make that window two inches smaller, we're not going to get 2 million out of it.
No.
So, let's give her a number to work with and...
14.
Yeah, the max, 14.
You said that at 12 and a half.
Look at inflation, let's, let's...
That was last year, that was November.
Sounds like option two, Toby, can you go a little...
Yeah, is that, that's construction cost, right, 14 million? That's excluding FFNE?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is your design stuff funded differently?
Oh, yeah, design wasn't in that cost either, I don't think, so, we got design, FFNE...
But technically, we're already agreed upon, on our fee, so if you're figuring that number separately, um, or have already accounted...
We've already agreed to that.
Right, so, 14.
That should be included in our whole project basket, but this is still 14.
Right.
We'll talk to Larry Branhurst, get down to like 5,000 bucks.
Um, well, I, I think, uh, a- as we sit, we can work with getting this to 14, I think, you know, under our scope, yes, yes, yeah.
That's the max.
So we're going to look at the 14 million option that we've already identified and see what we can do to improve that.
Yeah.
Did we get, did you say option two was 14.5? I'm just kidding.
Then we take it out of your budget, since you're, you're providing all these services for Toby, look at the savings you will get, look at the savings you will, you will have by not having to, uh, transport and all this, so, so, hey, half a million out of your budget is...
If I don't have to pay, I need that deal in writing.
My words, bud.
Is that what Toby would think?
Yeah.
Okay, you had two yeses up there.
Well, then, we'll go back, um, we'll work together with our team and NAPHOLDS, revisit all of this, um, and, and try to get back to you guys shortly.
Is, yeah, I guess that's the next, that, that the full commission will still be involved with...
Yes.
Uh, the VE efforts, within the 14, we're going to have a lot of program, what's in the building, is it six cell, is it eight cell, that still comes back in this type of setting to talk about?
My intention is that if we, we tell Toby what she's got to work with, and she makes it work within that number, if Sam and Harry want to sit in those meetings and such, that's fine, but I...
Okay, but that does put it more to our design team discussion.
Here's our, what we got to make it work with and...
If we fit within 14, it's good, but what goes within 14?
Narrow parking spaces and...
Okay, that'd be good for us, I mean, we got to get this moving for...
Yes.
Get some things ordered, so if we can...
Are y'all doing it that way, or do you want to, you've kind of been working with a lot of it.
Harry, we just need...
I don't want to get into the weeds all the time here, it's, Toby, Toby knows the requirements.
And we're definitely going to keep you at the loop, too, as well.
We just need updates.
Yeah.
We need updates.
We'll get the updates, and then obviously, once there is a final GMP, that would be a sign, sign here, purchase the building type of a decision, but the rest of this, we need to keep it moving over the next two months.
Yes.
Um, so then, I lost my train of thought, so, um, moving forward, basically, what we're going to do is, any meeting that we have, that we hold, um, with these folks here, that, uh, we're still going to give you the invite to that, so if one or all three of you want to attend, however you want to do it, you have that option. So if one or all three of you want to attend, however you want to do it, you have that option. And any major things that we're going to do, we'll, we'll list those out. What's all included, still make sure before anything's finally approved that everybody's on the same page. And go from there. So we'll, we'll reconvene and then we'll reach out to you guys to, to reschedule a review of what we felt.
Okay.
You got a good direction then?
I believe so.
That wasn't too bad. Kept it under our balance. Nobody's bleeding.
Anything else to come before us? I would entertain a motion to stand in recess until 4:30.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?